Oh, is it saying the opposite?
I couldn't get that thing to come on the other night in the Civil Service Commission. I figured I'd tell you that.
There is no utopia.
I didn't think that.
I told my people at home that, you know, I heard about this place called Utopia, but I was so burned out.
It never would flash.
Oh, with my comment?
It was turned off. I had to turn it on.
There you go.
Well, we still need to try to get there.
Hey, Chief. Good well, thanks.
I'd like to call the Mammell Media, uh, Mammell City Council meeting to order. Uh, first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'm gonna lead us in that. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this community in which we serve, Lord. We'd ask you to be with those within our community that are sick or have suffered loss of a loved one, Lord. We'd ask you to bless them and, and comfort them as only you know how, Lord. At this time also, we're mindful that we're under the threat of severe weather tonight, and we'd ask that you watch over Arkansas, Lord, and keep all of our constituents safe and all the citizens of Arkansas safe tonight, Lord. We'd also ask you to be with our uniformed personnel that's serving our city, Lord. We'd ask you to be with them and, and keep them safe as they provide protection for our city, Lord. And all those servicemen and women that are serving us overseas, Lord, we'd ask you to protect them and comfort them, uh, in this time away from their family members, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I have no special guests and announcements tonight, so you don't have to sit through a thirty-five minute talk, so I'm sure you're happy about that. Uh, next item is approval of the minutes of the February twenty-first regular meeting. Wait, hold on just a second. There's, uh, there've been, uh, the minutes have been amended and they are passed out at your chair or at your seat, and I'll let Ms. Timmons tell you exactly where they were changed at, and then, then I'll entertain a motion after that if everybody's okay with it.
Okay, Council, I wanted to, um, point out to you all specifically what I changed. Um, you know, my objective is to summarize the meetings, not give a transcript word, uh, word for word, but if there is something, uh, specific that you would like included, I appreciate if you let me know, and Alderman Mosley, um, he, he did bring that to my attention, so if you go to page four, the last line, uh, we just wanted to make sure that it was understood, Alderman Mosley's stance, uh, on that particular ordinance. And then on page six, I simply changed, uh, Alderman Saunders to Alderman Anderson, and that was it, those two small changes.
Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, just wanted to verify, there was, there was an item in there in the minutes under the discussion of the sign regulations. We'd been talking about the, uh, temporary signs and whether they could stay up indefinitely, or, you know, what the meaning of temporary was, and there was a, a line here that Alderman Mosley stated, the ordinance does not set a time limit for temporary signs, and that's, I remember saying that, that's correct. Uh, Alderman Norris, I mean, excuse me, Attorney Norris stated definitionally a temporary sign could not be permanent. Now, I don't remember him stating it that way. I thought he was in agreement that it was that a temporary sign could be up indefinitely.
I don't recall what I said. If I said that it couldn't be permanent, I was wrong. It is, the definition of temporary signs is very specific, and, in fact, I think I mentioned that a temporary sign could just remain out there. But the way we define it is based on the construction, and so I think, and I don't know if I'm getting off track a little bit and into the substance of the definition of a temporary sign, but I think definitionally it's something that looks like it was, uh, intended to be permanent, is permanent and temporary is the opposite.
But it didn't mean it had to be temporary, so, so I guess you could really say you agreed with what I said, but.
I, I think that's, I think that's accurate.
I'd like to make a motion and that we amend that, your comment just slightly to say you agreed with Alderman Mosley, but in the rest of the sentence, would that be appropriate?
We'll get, I don't recall what was said at the meeting, but that, that seems consistent with the way I recalled the broader discussion.
All right.
Page two, last paragraph.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd make that motion and you're in agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change the last sentence under the last paragraph on page two to read Alderman Norris agreed with Alderman Mosley? Is that?
No.
Oh, all right. Uh, y'all need to tell me what you wanna say then.
I'd prefer not to be Alderman Norris in the minutes.
Attorney Norris.
Attorney Norris, yeah.
Agreed with Alderman Mosley? Is that what you wanna say?
I'm not the one making the motion.
Okay, all right, I.
Uh, I'd make a motion that, that says that Attorney Norris agreed with Alderman Mosley and, and then stated that definitionally a temporary sign, well, that's still, it's kinda contradictory. I don't really know. Can we just say, uh, can we agree that you just agreed?
Why don't we just make the motion to strike it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause I, I just didn't want to go into minutes that look like that, that there was, there was some that, that a temporary sign couldn't be permanent.
If a temporary sign can be up indefinitely, you could classify that as permanent, because we don't have a time limit on it.
Right.
So I'd rather just see it stripped, stripped and from the record.
So Alderman Mosley, do you wanna just strike the sentence then?
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's your motion.
I'd make a motion then, we just strike the sentence of, of, of what Attorney Norris said.
Okay. All right, and who seconded? Okay, and you, you, all right, okay.
I'm sorry for that, but.
All right. Okay, so the motion is that, uh, to amend it as striking the last sentence under the last paragraph on page two.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then there was, uh, the amendments that, uh, Ms. Timmons pointed out also, so when we, uh, this passes, but we still need the motion to amend it, or to approve them as amended, so, all right. First question is to strike the last sentence of the last paragraph on page two. Does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Alderman Vapurzan, do you wanna make a motion now on the?
Yes.
Approve the minutes as amended? Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to amend the minutes.
We'll acknowledge that I was the one who made the motion to approve the motion that needed to be amended.
She's writing all that down.
I'm sorry. Continue. Sarcasm, my apologies.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes as amended, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have no public comment cards tonight. So we will move on to the next item, which is a financial statement review, which will be done at the second meeting of the month. This time, we move on to the procedural motion. I meet a motion from the floor that we read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, second, that we read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, we have the third reading of ordinance number nine twenty-two amending the sign regulations. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Twenty-Two and ordinance amending the City of Mammell sign regulations.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we accept ordinance nine twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we accept ordinance number nine twenty-two. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan? Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Williams? Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Motion passes. We now have the third reading of ordinance number nine twenty-three amending the land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only, please.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Twenty-Three and ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map and for other purposes.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to accept ordinance nine twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, uh, ordinance nine twenty-three. Is there any discussion on that motion? Not? Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Yes.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the third reading of ordinance number nine twenty-four amending the zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that one by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Twenty-Four and ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance nine twenty-four.
Nine twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
Nine twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, or, accept ordinance number nine twenty-four amending the zoning map. Is there any discussion on that motion? Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number nine twenty-five accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Twenty-Five and ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage and natural trail estates upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
Motion to approve ordinance nine twenty-five?
Second.
Then motion, second, to approve ordinance number nine twenty-five. Is there any discussion on that motion? Alderman Holt?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanna say that Thursday, while I was going through all of these, um, detailed paperwork, it dawned on me that it probably would be well time spent to go out and visit that area, so I picked up the phone, I called, uh, Mr. Jim Neri and asked him if he had a few minutes to go out there, and he said he'd be glad to, and he also called Mr. Eric Holloway, and, uh, so we met up with him. I told him I'd volunteer to take my car, but we wound up taking Mr. Holloway's truck, and I sure was glad after I got out there. But that was a, um, uh, an experience. It really is an impressive, um, uh, process. It's, um, uplifting. It's the kinda good news that we sorta need right now, and I've best really appreciated the expert, um, guidance by the two gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Alderman Holt? There's no other discussion of ordinance number nine twenty-five. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Williams? Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Yes.
And Alderman Holt?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number nine twenty-six accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Twenty-Six and ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage in Mammell, Public Library Edition Lot Two R R and for other purposes.
Motion to approve ordinance nine twenty-six?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number nine twenty-six. Is there any discussion or questions on ordinance number nine twenty-six? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holt?
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzan?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Williams? Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes, ma'am. I'll vote yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to new business, we have the first reading of ordinance number nine twenty-nine amending the mast, mast, master land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Twenty-Nine and ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map and for other purposes.
This item is on first reading, and it has been brought forth by the planning, or, it was brought forward from the Planning Commission, uh, and you have copies of the Planning Commission minutes in your packet that addresses this issue. We also have Mr. Eric Holloway, who's the engineer on this project, and Dr. David Haas, who's the developer and owner of the, uh, property also in the audience, if there's any questions. Alderman Holt?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just to, uh, for the record, uh, all, the ordinance number nine twenty-five refers in that same plat area as the bio trail, and nine twenty-nine, it's, uh, for my clarification, they refer to track one, two, and three. Just sort of a, how do they fit in there, or is it in the same area of either Holloway or Mr. Neri? Would it, could it come in?
Jim Neri, Director of Planning and Zoning. The first ordinance was the acceptance of maintenance for dedication for Dr. Haas's subdivision, Natural Trail Estates, the, uh, the twenty-six lot subdivision. This ordinance is to amend the land use plan and then later the zoning map to change those three.
To change those three commercial lots that we showed you on Thursday?
Yes, sir, right.
Or, or those residential lots from PRD to C four highway commercial?
Okay, yeah.
As we talked about.
Right, it's just a clarification. I, I didn't.
Right.
That's all I needed. I appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just wanted to make sure we all knew exactly where this is. It's actually from where Council Massey actually used to end, and then, uh, extends down to, um, into the new roadway to where the new road would go into, um, the subdivision being developed by Dr. Haas. Uh, and those three lots are there, sandwiched in between where that'll be. As I'd mentioned last week, uh, I was in a meeting that Mr. Holloway had. They were gracious enough to let a, let an Alderman attend there, and they, uh, had a meeting and they, they talked about a, a road where it would extend, and, and I'd also asked all the residents that were there, they were, it was almost fully represented by the residents that lived there along natural steps. Natural trails, excuse me. And, uh, uh, anyway, uh, nobody objected to this rezoning, and so, so with nobody objecting and, and the fact that this is probably, uh, this is consistent with our long-range, um, plan, uh, I'll probably be voting yes for this. Uh, I would ask Mr. Neri if he's heard any objections to this at all.
Actually, on the public comment, where folks actually see the sign and call our office, we had one. One objection, and they gave no reason.
Okay, is there any way you can reveal who that is?
No, sir, they don't give their names.
Anonymous, no.
I'm against it. Click.
All right. That's all I need to know. Thank you, sir. That's all the questions and comments I've got.
Okay. Are there any other questions on ordinance number nine twenty-nine? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the first reading of ordinance number nine thirty, which is the amending the master zoning map, and it also applies to the same three tracks of land, so. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Thirty and ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion on ordinance number nine thirty? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item, and these, both of these items will be on the second reading at the next meeting. Move on to the next item, which is the first reading of ordinance number nine thirty-one amending the ma, amending the master land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Thirty-One and ordinance amending the Mammell land use plan and map and for other purposes.
Mr., uh, Eric Holloway is in the audience tonight, representing this, uh, applicant, and also, Mr. Blake Jackson, uh, sent, um, a flyer basically on the villa, and that you can look at it, and it's got the, uh, I guess some descriptions and everything of showing you the area that they're talking about. It's actually labeled on page four, project location, in which you also have that in a, uh, the documents that's attached to it, so, uh, but it shows you the actual, where it's gonna be and kind of the, the schematic design of it, so, if anybody has any questions, but I'd recommend you take that home and look at it. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, again, I, I think I talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, but, um, I just wanted to share my obs, observations. I did go out there and, and met with, uh, Mr. Blake Jackson, and, and, uh, he gave me a tour of the whole facility and, and this area where they're, um, wanting to rezone that land, and, uh, his intended purpose is, is to build a, like a croquet court and a lap pool and a little outdoor bar area to entertain the, uh, the residents that currently live there. Uh, he said there's, there is no, no intention of building another building or adding to the residence or any, anything in that regard. And, uh, I observed that there is a, currently a, a retention area, uh, there on that land. He, he indicated that he was gonna probably fill that with water and put a fountain in, and, um, so, I really, I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote on this, because I, I swore to my residents I'd never, never vote to rezone, uh, for, anything for apartments in a high-traffic area, but, um, I'm not sure, but I, I do not really object to this, because I don't see that it has a negative effect on traffic or anything like that, so. And I, I would say that this is probably the nicest apartment complex I've ever toured. Uh, it's a very high-quality, very classy, uh, situation, and, uh, he should be commended for doing such a great job, but that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Are there any other questions or discussion on ordinance nine thirty-one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the first reading of ordinance number nine thirty-two amending the master zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number Nine Thirty-Two and ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
I think I said nine thirty-one, and you read nine thirty-two, which is correct, so. Okay, knew what I meant. That's bad. You're reading my mind. Uh, this is also the same piece of property that we just referenced to on the master land use plan, so it's the, it's the strip of property that's on the, uh, the villas at Riverpoint Drive, uh, that's going to be turned into a social area, I believe would be the correct term for that. A social area?
Oh, yeah, a social area.
Social area. Amenity, social area. I mean, it's, it's a croquet court, a pool, I mean, that's, you know, and cabanas, so I believe that's a social area. Is there any discussions on that ordinance? Okay, if not, both of these will also be on second reading at our next meeting. There being no other new business, we'll move on to Mayor's comments. Um, to, uh, I had, uh, mentioned, uh, or had, on the agenda, the Mammell Center on the Lake grand opening. I know most of y'all were able to attend the grand opening on, uh, uh, Friday at noon. Uh, I also know that some attended the, uh, the VIP reception that they had Thursday night for their volunteers, and, uh, there was an article also in today's Arkansas Democrat Gazette, uh, that highlighted it, and as I understand it, Channel Eleven was there today, uh, interviewing people and, and filming parts of it, so, uh, it's very nice. If you have not had a chance to tour it, I recommend that you go tour it. Uh, if you're, uh, over fifty, fifty or above, I recommend that you join it. Uh, and speaking of memberships, we've, uh, the, the Senior Wellness Center received and processed seventy-seven memberships forms since the VIP reception Thursday night through today. So, yeah, so they, uh, they start their membership over every year, so they're currently at five hundred and thirty-three members. They had eight hundred last year, but we also closed the center down in August, so some didn't renew, just because it was, there, we didn't close it down, but we had to close down the lunch program and some things, and, and so, uh, so they didn't renew their memberships at January, but we've had seventy-seven renewed since then. We also have the extended hours, so there's two different memberships, a gold and a silver, I think, that, you know, we all, all were a part of approving. But, uh, they had, uh, they fed lunch in there today, and, uh, other than just some minor glitches, which you can expect anytime you open a new facility, everything went well, I believe, uh, today, and, uh, they're opening at five, and they go through eight. Five AM to eight PM right now, so, uh, a very good event, and I've heard nothing but good things about the facility, mainly from the, uh, the users of it, but also from people that weren't quite old enough to join yet going, wow, I can't wait till I'm fifty, so, uh, so for, uh, I think it was a, a very, uh, good project for our citizens, and as I told this, uh, at the grand opening, the center was, is their center, so it's the citizens' center, and we couldn't run it without the volunteers, and so we sure do appreciate the volunteers, and, uh, they were there Thursday night, they were there Friday, and they were there again today, working, uh, and, uh, some of the best part is the, we have docents now, uh, you know, uh, that basically give tours to the facility now, uh, that greet you the minute you come in and everything, so it's very nice. I went in today, and they tried to give me a tour, but I turned them down, so. And just, uh, a reminder, there's several that will be taking the trip to DC on, uh, over this weekend, that the, the, the NLC, uh, runs from March the eleventh through March the fifteenth in Washington, DC. We'll be going to that. Just a reminder, there will be a, uh, a luncheon that the Arkansas Municipal League sponsors on the Wednesday, so if you're able, we want you to attend that. Uh, the senators and representatives should be in attendance at that meeting, uh, for any questions and things like that, and then we have scheduled, on Tuesday, we got meetings scheduled with Senator Bozeman, Senator Cotton, and Representative Hill. And Senator Hill's is tentative right now. We think it's locked down, but as of right now, it's about a five PM meeting or something, so, but we think we're gonna still have that. Let me, I've got some pictures, but let me address one more thing before we go to there. Uh, Mr. Mike Dow came to the council, uh, last meeting, thirteen Christie Lane, and, and pointed out a drainage issue. And so, on Wednesday of last week, uh, myself, our city engineer, Mazan Roman, and Alderman Mark Kelly, cause it is in Ward Two, is where the, the property is located, went to look at the, uh, the actual area, and, uh, on Friday afternoon late, I received a, uh, email from Mr. Roman, and, uh, basically, he said it looks like about point two-eight acres of drainage area contributes to the flow at that ditch that we walked yesterday. That amounts to one point six-four cubic feet per second during a twenty-five-year rainfall. Average width of the contributing drainage area is about ninety feet, so the average velocity across the drainage area behind the house is about point zero one eight cubic feet per second. And he says, I guess that's why we didn't see any movement of leaves and debris or significant erosion or any high-water marks. So then I replied back, so how big, would he, would he? I said, so with that much flow, would you recommend that we put in under a pipe? And he said it is a very small overland flow without any single- single collection point. Therefore, it'd be hard to capture to transport it to a discharge point. I would prefer it to remain as an overland flow. There's really no good reason to capture such a small quantity and burden the existing stormwater system downstream. And so, that's our engineers' recommendation. Now, Mr. Dow had told, had come into the city hall last, the week of this council meeting, said he was going to have his own engineer look at it also, but I've not heard back from him. But what, I did some real quick calculations. When you hear one point cubic, one point six-four cubic feet per second, everybody's like, well, how much is that? You know, it's twelve point twelve, twelve point two-six gallons per second is what it amounts to. A cubic foot of water is seven point four-eight gallons. So, it is a very small amount of water. We're talking about a twenty-five-year rainfall event, which is supposed to be occurring every twenty-five years. So, you know, technically, now that, they do it in probability, but you know, there's a, what, I guess there's a, would that be a four percent chance of it occurring, correct, Mr. Larry?
Yes, sir.
There's a four percent chance of that occurring at any time. But that's during a twenty-five-year storm is all the water that would be going through there. And that's what Mr. Ramon remarked, was that there's still leaves laying in this ditch. They would have been disturbed if we had a lot of flow going through there. And we did have a pretty large rainfall event a few weeks ago. Now, it's been a few weeks back. And, but, so that was his recommendation, is that we do not do anything with that area. So, I thought Mr. Dow might be here tonight, but I, I will communicate with him what our engineers have said. So.
I, I drove down Christie Lane maybe this morning when I was out. And I didn't know, I couldn't remember which house it was or anything, but there was a house that had started digging French drains from around.
That is the house. That's it. Yeah. But the, that has nothing to do with the drainages that, that we're looking at. Okay? The, the house, if you go to the backyard, it slopes down to the house, but the water that's on the city's green space does not flow down that slope next to the house. It goes around that slope.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And that's, is that where your light was on? I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Okay. But no, I mean, there is water behind their house, but it's falling on the slope in their yard and then flowing toward the house. All right. Madam City Clerk, are we ready with some pictures? Just to make it easier. All right. These pictures were taken back in August. So, you have an aerial view of the Counts Massey extension. So, the property that you just talked about for tracks one, two, and three are on the left side, middle area where you kind of see some roads, some, some little roads going up through there. That's where track one, two, and three would be. Okay, so that area right there is tracks one, two, and three in that area. And then that's not the exact layout, but that's close to where the bio trail would be, is that roadway right there. And so, existing Counts Massey ends about right there. And then it goes down. The bridge is right there. Short Marshay is right there. Interstate forty. I'm shaking, I know, but it's right there. All right, let's go on with some, all right. Just another view. Bio trail right there, the bridge, Interstate forty. You can see a little better view of Interstate forty, and that's where the road dead ends right there and ties into the natural trail. Keep going. Just another view of the bridge. Another view over the bridge. Hold back up one, please. Okay, no. Next one. All right. So, that's Interstate forty. That's the end of the roadway right there currently. This is the rest area. You can see some asphalt in that area right there. That's current. So, the interchange would be in that location right there. That's where the interchange would be at. And so, these pictures are all taken in August. You saw a lot of dirt. You saw the bridge. Back up one more, if you would. And these were all taken from a helicopter, thanks to Zane Anderson. And so, you see nothing really done on the bridge, other than some concrete vents being poured right there. But it's an open span right now. From there to there, it's four hundred foot long. Okay. All right. So, this is some of the roadway work that was being done. This is near the start of the roadway, near the natural trail. This was taken back in September, August timeframe. And if we'll keep going, just some more of the same area. And the question was asked, is there any land developable on this roadway? That's what kind of spurred me to think about presenting this. As you can see, there's, there's high ground to the right, high gr, high ground to the left. And most of the south side of the roadway is all developable, other than directly adjacent and around the bridge area, because it's, it's developable land. Go, go ahead. That right there is the south side of the road. That's a wall that was put in. The reason we had to put the wall in is because there's a cemetery above that. So, we could not tie the slope back because there's some graves that are in that area. But, but along that entire south side, right through there, other than where the cemetery is, would be developable. Okay. That's right is that the approach to the bridge. So, there is quite a bit of fill right here. There's about eighteen foot of fill right here and eighteen on the other side. But where, where, where that picture's taken from, you turn right around and the bridge is right there. The wall is directly behind those trucks. So, that's fine. That's the pilings after they were driven. And you can see the caps are on the ones out in the actual bridge itself. And those pilings are at the abutments. Okay. Just some bridge pictures during construction. They're putting the steel beams up on the bridge there. Just to give you a little bit of scale of how big the beams are. So, that gentleman's probably, you know, standard height. So, it's at least over three foot that the beams are. The riprap at the abutment. Putting shale down. This is looking toward, from the bridge toward the east side, toward Short Marshay or toward Interstate forty. So, you can see the land to the right would be developable. That is the bridge deck. And I told this story the other day. I gave this presentation at the expo luncheon. And every time I went down there, the creek was only ten foot wide or fifteen foot wide. And I'm like, why are we building a four hundred foot long bridge? Well, after the rains we had in February, that's what it looks like. So, now I see why we're building a four hundred foot long bridge. So, you know, when you look at something during dry weather, you're like, man, that's a big bridge for this little creek. But then it was from end to end once the rains came. That's the bridge deck after they put the deck down. And then you'll see some more pictures that have the rebar on them. Keep going. Just some more looking toward the east. That's actually got the gravel base down. It's what they're putting down now on the eastern side of the slope, or the eastern side of the project. And where the tree, go back one. So, where the, where the trees are at the end, that's the dead end. And it turns left into Short Marshay right there. So, the trees right there enter into the rest area. That's the reinforcing steel that's on the bridge deck. Tine steel, still just showing some of the water. That, that was an access road that was actually underwater. So, they, they're using this road to traverse through. And the crane's actually using it and going under, it's not going underwater, but he's going through the water. Okay, these pictures were taken Saturday by Mr. Myron Putnam. Alderman Anderson provided these to me. But they're actually, they've already poured the concrete deck from that end right there. And the screed is right there. They poured four hundred yards of concrete on Saturday, over seventy yards an hour. So, in six hours, they poured four hundred cubic yards of concrete and finished the bridge deck. They have two pumper trucks, one's down below, one's up on top. And they actually, they moved that pumper, he was, he started out down here and he moved one time, took the middle of the bridge. And then when they got toward this end, this pumper took over. They had twelve, twelve concrete trucks dedicated to the pour and over thirty individuals working on the bridge along with the screed. So.
He said those trucks were just coming?
There, there was always six trucks there. There was always six trucks on site, just about, either unloading concrete or washing out or waiting to unload. And that's just another view. You can see, there, there's two trucks there and there's three trucks stacked right there waiting to back up. And there's probably two more washing out down at their concrete washout pit. So, this is just kind of a close-up of the operation. So, the two trucks backed up to the pumper. He's pumping up on the bridge. The other pumper truck is parked right here. And that's, that's when they had about seventy more yards to pour of the deck. One more, I think, maybe two more pictures. So, just kind of, you see the whole operation. I mean, there's gentlemen everywhere and pouring the concrete. And then a close-up of the actual, and they had two pumps going at that time. That's when they had both pumps going, the one above and one below. So. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, our, our extension project stops at the rest area. It doesn't actually, we won't be actually constructing into the rest area. That would come in, come in when we do the interchange. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
That's correct. The interchange project will tie to the end of that roadway. And I wouldn't recommend going out there without somebody from the city. I mean, it's a construction site. They want people wearing hard hats, vests, and all that. But, I mean, we can probably, if someone wants to go, contact me or somebody at the city. But they don't like people just driving in. It, it's a little dangerous for them, especially if there's heavy trucks and traffic and all that. So, I don't recommend driving down there. And there's big road closed signs and it says it's a construction site and all that. And that site technically belongs to the contractor right now. It's his job site. So, that's why I decided the pictures might help and keep a hundred vehicles from driving down there all the time. So, because they, they get, and they did have some theft at the start of the project also. They had lots of things being stolen down there. But a lot of that has stopped. But there's still an issue with just people driving through the area because they want to see what's going on. All right. Moving on, the next part is Planning Commission report. And Alderman Mosley attended the Planning Commissions.
Yeah, we, I kind of reported last week, but everything did pass that was up. And we've gotten two of them, two of the things have been referred on to us, the villa and the rezoning out there at the end of Counts Massey. There was a, a house that was built one foot too close to the street. The garage, I guess, infringed and that was given a variance. And that was, I think, unanimous. And Kimberly Clark's request to, for a landscape plan and revised site, site plan were all approved. They did, they elected new officers. Mike Fisher was reelected as chairman. And John Todd was reelected as vice chairman. And Secretary was also again reelected as Roy Andrews. And I think, I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Any aldermen's comments? Alderman Mosley?
I just, if you'd be patient with me, just real quick here, I, I get inspired by residents occasionally. And I just wanted to share a, a quick story that occurred when we had the grand opening on Friday. I came out of the building after we, after the ribbon was cut and everything. And there was a, a little, little lady in the parking lot. And she may have been ninety years old. And she was in one of these little scooter wheelchair type things that you see driving around town. And she was struggling trying to get a mink coat on. She was all dressed up and, and, and she was, she had this mink coat that was kind of crammed down behind her in the wheelchair. So, I said, can I help you? And she said, yes. And so, I got, got it all up and got her arm in there. And she got, got her all bundled up. And she said, I need to wear this because it's two miles back to where I live. And she told me where she lived and I can't remember where, but it was.
Lives at Audubon.
Was it Audubon? And she said, I, I drove the two miles down here and I stayed warm. And, and she said, I'm getting ready to go back. And she, she puttered off in this little cart. And I said, drive safely. And she said, thank you. And was just really friendly and, and pleasant. And I was just totally inspired by this little lady that got out to come to the grand opening, all decked out in her finest clothes. And was brave enough to go traveling two miles on that little cart to, to come to the thing. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that story. It was kind of neat.
She got there at ten, too, for noon. So, yeah.
You say she got there at ten? You know who she is.
Yeah, I do know who she is. Yeah. No, she told me. She got, she, she didn't, she didn't remember what time, so she wasn't going to miss it. So, she got there at ten.
She was just as excited as could be.
She was excited. And she, she enjoyed the, the facility the other day. She told me how nice she thought it was several times. So, yeah. Yeah, I know exactly who you're talking about. So, because when she came up, she had her mink coat on, you know. So, I, I didn't see her take it off. But, yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
All right. Any other aldermen's comments? Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing.
Madam City Clerk?
No.
Okay. There be no other business come before this council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.
Under?
Thank you.
Yeah, but you, you said, you said on the half hour. We're only four minutes.
Couple of people from my church are with me.
I said ten minutes till.
And then the.
He said thirty?
Yeah.
Caucasian on the platform was, that's my daughter-in-law's mother.
Didn't you say thirty?